These days, it can be hard to trust the media. What's true, what's fake, and who is behind the message? I'm a freelance journalist and videographer who has spent years studying the media. Now I'm taking a look at what local, regional, and national news stories mean to us here in North Central Washington. I'm Dominic Boni, and this is Common Sense. Hello and welcome to Common Sense. I'm Dominic Boni, and in this episode, we were going to focus on James Cody and their boss Christina, who has given them both a chance to work and earn a day's wage while they recover from serious addictions. Christina and her brother Joseph Hunter are local changemakers who give folks in recovery a hand up to a better life. But that's gonna have to wait until next week, because this week, we have to take a look at what happened at the Wenatchee School Board meeting on August 24th. By now, if you're a Wenatchee resident, you've probably seen or heard about it, or perhaps even seen some of the footage I captured during that meeting. It started as an in-person meeting, but ended up on Zoom because a large group of anti-mask activists crashed it and, surprise, surprise, refused to wear masks.
And we are here to tell you that screw the mandate. We are here to tell you that we paid for this.
Now, the whole video is about 25 minutes long, so I cut out a few highlights to share with you in this episode, and you can find a link to the full video in the show notes. Before we roll this first clip, I want to fill you in on how I knew that something newsworthy would be happening at that meeting. That morning, I saw a post from a local public Facebook group that was set up to support conservative candidates running for Wenatchee School Board. "I'm freaking gone all week, or else I'd be there in riot gear," she writes. Well, I'm sure you can see why that post would pique my interest, so I decided to go and check it out. But my instincts as a citizen trumped my ruthlessness as a journalist, and rather than keeping the information to myself and letting these folks blindside the board, which would make for great footage, I decided to shoot the district admin team an email with a screenshot and give them a heads up. Somehow, that message didn't get to the board, and they were blindsided all the same. And this is what I walked into.
You can get a vaccine to protect yourself.
Vaccines are available.
Which they also have the opportunity to get vaccines.
Here's the deal, we all have our personal opinion and our rights.
Yours is against masks, and yours is also against mandates.
It's United States of America, and I have my rights, and so do you and I, and I respect your rights.
It's why we take a bullet.
So I'd ask, we're under the governor's order that we have a mask mandate, that everybody put on their mask, that that is the mandate that we're under.
We ask that you hear the comments of concerned citizens as the superintendent of school boards, and I have the public comment section and then decide what we want to do with the meeting.
We absolutely want to hear from the community, absolutely, sir. But I just hope everybody understands that we are under the guideline of the governor of the state of Washington. We have, you may, no, 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 I recognize what you have.
Oh, wait, no, I was raising my hands.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, not this.
Yeah, sorry.
No, my case, don't go here. So, but I was just gonna ask you, realize a guideline is a guideline, not a, a mandate is also under a guideline? So...
So, we are under a mandate to make sure that we have the masks in place.
And we are here to tell you that screw the mandate. We are here to tell you that we paid for this.
You're here to bully public servants and determine what's going on.
There's no way, this is bullying.
So do you want to hear us or not?
I would love to hear it.
This is not, this is not, shut this down.
There's like 10 people here all over the room.
I'm really sorry if this is how wet toilet paper we've become, that this is bullying, us trying to talk is, wow, wrestle your way out of piece of wet toilet paper then.
I'm not really sure what the wet toilet paper thing means, but in context, I think she's trying to gaslight the guy as well as emasculate him for wearing a mask and voicing concern about the protesters' refusal to follow the rules when asked by district staff. And although it's the anti-maskers who are causing this conflict deliberately, what I'd like to direct your attention to is the board and district staff, who I think handled the situation as well as anyone could. After that, there's some more back and forth between folks who were abiding by the rules and this man who refused to do so.
Again, we're under a mask mandate.
Let's hear from your board, you just said this up to the board, let's hear from your board.
So we haven't started our meeting, so...
Is there a Zoom option for people who would not like to wear a mask in person?
Yeah, absolutely.
That seems like a reasonable accommodation.
Why do we have to change our values and our way of living? I'm not, I'm not offended that you're wearing a mask, I'm not offended if you like vaccines, so why do I have to change for you? I could care less what you guys want to do.
So say the COVID-19 laws, man, you can't...
It's not a law, how many times we have to repeat this? It's a mandate, it's just some vomit from J. Dolph, and it has no holding ground.
That's Luke, and we're gonna hear more from him real soon. But I pulled this clip because it really shows how reasonable the folks wearing masks were and how unreasonable Luke and the others were being. Now, wearing a mask isn't a value, and no one gets vaccinated because they like it. People get vaccines because it equips their immune systems to fight off potentially deadly pathogens, not only protecting them personally, but also the people around them. And you can call Jay Inslee "J. Dolph" all you want, but under a state of emergency, a mandate carries the force of law, which means you're basically arguing pointless semantics. After that, the board comes in, and they begin the meeting, and it doesn't go well. Let's take a look at that clip.
I now call the meeting of the Wenatchee School Board on August 24th of 2021 to order. And before we continue any further with meeting this evening, as if anybody new has come into the room, our district is committed to following the mask mandate issued by the governor and the superintendent of public instruction. Many members of the audience are unmasked this evening. All have been offered the opportunity to be provided with a mask if they do not have one. A good majority of the people have refused to part their mask and to wear one. We respect everybody's right to have an opinion, and we do want to hear from each and every one of you. However, it poses some degree of risk for our district to continue with open public meetings and violation of the governor's mandate. It is the board's decision, as a whole, not mine alone, to decide what to do in this circumstance. And so I'd like to open the floor to the board members to make a motion or to offer direction. I'll start. I would be comfortable with excusing staff from the meeting to the extent they're public employees and they're, we're concerned about them as employees. I would also be willing to proceed with the meeting, because I don't think there's a clear indication in the proclamation that we can avoid doing business if we have folks exercising their right to participate without, you know, without them following the guidelines. So I, as I said, I'm in favor of stopping staff and then conducting business. Thank you.
I believe that we should all be wearing masks, both legally, lawfully, the Secretary of Health and the instructions we have as a responsible board taking care of our obligations and duties. I believe I would like to reiterate the offer to everybody to have a mask, and then you may speak. That is my position.
I will second what Martin said. If we can't get the audience to protect everyone and our staff, we need our staff to follow through with our presented agenda, and if we cannot comply with the state mandate, then I would suggest the adjournment meeting.
We are not going to cycle public comment, we do want to hear what you have to say.
Can I ask one quick question? What's the board gonna do when the governor mandates that everybody has to wear pink shirts on, urgent?
Is this a good time where we're having a conversation with the public? Right now, the decision is...
Do as I say or leave?
Will you wear a mask and stay? Will you choose to leave and go online? Or if the majority of the participants in the room refuse to wear a mask, then it will be up to the board to decide whether to adjourn and to resume the meeting online. In any and all cases, the public will be allowed to participate in public comment.
Now, here's school board president Laura Jakes showing leadership, restraint, and diplomacy in a difficult situation. She lets board members weigh in on what they think they should do, considering the fact that they were in violation of the mask mandate and it's on public property, school property, it's a pretty generous thing to do. See, these protests were a nationally organized event, and when the Spokane Public School Board was faced with a similar situation last week at their meeting, school board president Gerald Haynes was having none of it. Here's a quote from the spokesman review's coverage of that meeting. Quote, "It had to be the shortest live board meeting in the history of Spokane Public Schools." Promptly at 7:00 PM Wednesday, board president Gerald Haynes opened the meeting by asking attendees to follow Governor Jay Inslee's mask mandate. Several people refused, and seconds later, Haynes hit the gavel again and led the other board members and staff out the door. The meeting continued via Zoom, end quote. Well, things didn't go that way here in Wenatchee, and it's actually school board candidate Matt Van Boger who pipes up to respond that if you do, 10 times more people will show up to the next meeting. Let's watch that clip after the break.
Hi, I'm Chuck Drone, managing member at Eplidallin Retirement and Assisted Living. It's been a tough year for all of us, but especially for those working and living in senior care facilities. Over the course of these many difficult months, our staff at Eplidallin has been vigilant in adhering to federal and state guidelines to protect and assure the safety of our residents and their caregivers. If you're in need of assisted living for a loved one, give us a call at Eplidallin, we're here for you.
At DA Davidson in Wenatchee, they believe your investment success begins with a personalized plan. A plan that is the roadmap you need to navigate your way to living your best years in retirement. DA Davidson can help you create a plan so you can take the time to enjoy the finer things in life. Let the financial advisors at DA Davidson help chart your retirement future today.
Kids are resilient. I just love their energy, they bounce back so quickly, I love the stories they tell, I love just their charisma, their character. I love to see that subtle smile that you pull out of a kid, you know, when you start talking with them about something they really like. I just love what I do, and I can't imagine I would be as happy doing anything else.
Welcome back. Let's take a look at what school board candidate Matt Van Boger had to say at the Wenatchee School Board meeting last week.
If the majority of the participants in the room refuse to wear a mask, then it will be up to the board to decide whether to adjourn and to resume the meeting online. In any and all cases, the public will be allowed to participate in public comment.
But you can do that, but 10 times more people are gonna show up the next meeting if that's what you choose to do.
It's an interesting campaign tactic that I'm sure galvanized the people in that room, but I wonder how average citizens will feel about Matt threatening to bring an even bigger crowd to bully the board at the next meeting. I guess that remains to be seen, but after the recess, since the anti-maskers refused to leave, the board was right back in the position they were before. And again, school board member Julie Norton suggests they continue the meeting, even though they in the school district are in violation of the state mandate and therefore could potentially lose state funding for the school district. As the discussion begins to wind its way to the inevitable conclusion of postponement and resumption on Zoom, old Luke goes off script and does something I'm pretty sure this crowd was coached not to do. He jumps to his feet, approaches the board, and starts yelling at them. Let's roll that footage now, which begins with board member Maria Inigaz essentially repeating what board president Laura Jakes said about being the primary caretaker for individuals she doesn't want to put at risk.
I am not in favor of continuing without complying with the mask mandate.
So be the conclusion of the board that masks are inappropriate?
It's not time for a discussion, I'm sorry, we're not having a discussion with the public right now.
My name's Luke Dietrich.
I'm sorry, Luke, you are not...
You were mentioning about, I have a six-year-old daughter, I have a three-year-old son, and I have a one-year-old son, and I feel unsafe for what you guys are forcing down their throats. The teaching you're bringing them, the way you can wear masks, it is unsafe and is harmful to them, and this is wrong, what you guys are doing. You're already gonna adjourn and not let it be spoken, Thomas, speak right now before you guys take off like cowards?
I mean, we didn't make a motion, I am very sure this, but I didn't...
They're talking about the fear of your family, what about mine family? I can't put my kids in board right now because they crap your teaching. It's absolutely disgusting.
Now, it's important to note how the crowd goes quiet as Luke jumps to his feet and approaches the board. You can even hear the man standing next to me say, "Come on, guys, let them hang themselves", which is an odd choice of words considering this tense situation. But that was it for President Laura Jakes, she banged the gavel and shut it down. But the most interesting part of the entire meeting to me wasn't Luke's aggressive outburst, it was the way the crowd acted towards the majority of the board and staff as they left the room versus the round of applause board member Julie Norton receives after she waits a beat to walk out behind them. Here's that clip.
No mandate, and they were unmasked, and you sat here with us. That's the discrimination.
It's what pushback looks like, and so in the beginning, they go all sick and tired of being sitting on this throne and passing out...
You're choosing to walk away, you don't have to leave.
We care about our kids.
So just to reiterate, the board just has adjourned for a moment, and they will have to come back and take action.
What's your opinion on this?
I'm staff, I'm staff.
Yeah, but you're superintendent.
As you see, this is the board meeting tonight, this is their...
You're part of the leadership.
Hey, but why do they get a choice, but we don't get a choice? I'd like you to tell us about it.
You got my vote, Julie.
The elected officials are gonna be non-elected officials soon, so, just saying.
Ready for new boards? Thank you, Julie.
It's almost like she helped contrive this situation and embolden a group of people who were clearly there to disrupt a public meeting and bully elected officials as well as fellow citizens, following the rules. But if I made a claim that she knew about that plan and even encouraged and directed angry anti-maskers to show up and harass her fellow board members, I would have to have some proof of that, right? It would be unethical and irresponsible of me to suggest that this publicly elected official helped direct a crowd of emotional people to take out their frustrations at her fellow board members in order to score political points and win reelection, unless I had proof. Good thing I do. Here's Julie's comment below Anna's post that I showed you before, the one where she was urging people to show up to the board meeting and lamenting that she's out of town or else, quote, "I'd be there in riot gear." Julie saw that post, and rather than urge a more reasonable approach to making their voices heard, she just provided a more accurate directions to where folks can find the board meeting. Now, I wouldn't include this screenshot if Norton had included even one line of text to try to tamp down the emotion, like, "No one needs to bring riot gear, please make your voices heard in peaceful way." If she would have written something like that in her comment, I wouldn't be talking about it right now. But she didn't lift a finger to calm the emotions of the angry crowd she helped direct at her fellow elected officials. So I feel like it would be a dereliction of my duty to you, the public, if I didn't mention it in this episode. It's unfortunate that Norton made that decision, because she has been a guest on Common Sense before, and prior to this, I thought she was the most reasonable candidate on the Republican ticket vying to take over the Wenatchee School Board. But her actions have proved otherwise. And I'd like to thank her and the folks in that room for showing their true colors. I could interview a thousand concerned liberals trying to warn their friends and neighbors about a national AstroTurf campaign to take over school boards using fear and intimidation. I can talk to experts and quote books written by very smart people who are trying to warn us about the chaotic post-truth society that we're living in, but that's like whistling in the wind when it comes to persuading average folks. The anti-mask and anti-vax crowd who blindsided most of the members of the Wenatchee School Board on August 24th just proves the point that I have been making since episode one of Common Sense. They showed us how local politics are going to work if you elect candidates who are willing to use nonsense, fear, and misinformation to win. To borrow a phrase from the Gen Z folks, that was a flex, it was an intimidation tactic, and we should all remember candidate Matt Van Boger's words, "You can do that, but 10 times more people are gonna show up to the next meeting if that's what you choose to do." It's also important to note that candidate Catherine Thomas was also unmasked and in attendance, and you can see her here embracing one of the Unmask Our Kids activists. The Unmask Our Kids movement bears an eerily, an eerie resemblance to the Save Our Children movement that helped the QAnon internet conspiracy theory go more mainstream, because who doesn't want to save the kids, right? Because of QAnon and the Save the Kids stuff, one gullible man in rural Virginia got so worked up, he grabbed some guns and went to go raid Comet Pizza in Washington DC, because he was convinced the basement of the building was a secret dungeon where the Clintons, among other elites, were keeping kids so they could harvest a substance called endrinochrome from them, which according to the QAnon folks is like the fountain of youth or something. Anyway, there was no basement at Comet Pizza, and therefore, no dungeon full of children. It might seem absurd, but the theme here is kids and people using them as a smokescreen as they further their political agenda. These people claim to care about kids, their kids, our kids, your kids, my kids, yet quite a few of people in that crowd admitted to not having any kids in the Wenatchee School District. Some were from out of town, others were homeschoolers, and others were too old to have kids in school. I know this because they admitted it to me when I asked them questions during the recess, or as they said it to each other while they thought no one was listening. And honestly, I wasn't listening to everyone people were saying around me, but my audio recorder was rolling the entire time, and I heard some pretty interesting stuff later when I went to edit the video. If you'd like to watch the full video recording and even listen to the audio from the recess, you'll hear me asking two anti-mask protesters if they'd like to do an on-camera interview while we wait for the board to come back. They declined. The links to the full video, the full audio file, and more are in the source notes for this episode online at ncwlife.com. Once you go to the homepage, click on the Full Episodes tab, and then scroll down to Common Sense. This is episode 42. One young woman, who is a recent high school graduate, thought that things were getting so out of control that she stepped out of the room and called Rivercom. She was told law enforcement would not enforce mask mandates, and they would not send anyone to check on the meeting, according to her. I just happened to catch her in the parking lot on my way out, so I stopped and asked her a few questions about that. Let's take a look.
I just called Rivercom during the meeting, because when I went in there, it was already a very hostile environment, and so it continued to get more and more hostile, so I called Rivercom. They directed me through, they're like, okay, we'll have an officer call you. I asked for civic engagement, basically, to have someone come and just make sure people stayed safe.
Yeah.
And the officer called and said, basically, he couldn't talk to me.
Uh huh.
Because I wasn't a district employee, and I had nothing to do with it.
Oh, wow.
And so he had to talk to a district employee, so I gave it to someone who works there.
Yeah.
And I stood there while she talked to him, and basically, he said, "It's their right to make a public comment, and they won't enforce masks, and he can't do anything about it, and if someone feels threatened, just adjourn the meeting."
And what officer did you speak with?
Officer Hewitt. I did not get a first name or a badge number, but, because it all went by within a span of five minutes.
Yeah, and what prompted you to feel the need to call law enforcement?
So I actually know someone who filed a report earlier today about the possibility of a riot happening, because previous Facebook posts, and then when I was in there, someone was on the phone with someone, and this person who is affiliated with the district told the person I was next to that someone needed to call Rivercom, and so I stepped up and I said, "I'll do it." And when I came outside, there was this guy watching me and texting people inside.
Hmm, interesting. Well, is there anything else that you want the community to know about just what happened inside and how you feel about that?
Honestly, if anything, wearing a mask for two hours like this will not hurt you, you don't breathe in that much carbon monoxide, dioxide, and oxide, both. People have to wear a 95 masks with surgical masks over and face shields for eight hours at a time, and if your child's education is truly important to you, you'll put on a mask for two hours.
Yeah.
It's not that big of a deal, and they had Zoom as an option, and everyone there refused.
Okay, wow, well, you kind of summed it up. Thank you for speaking with me today. Now, it's interesting, the law enforcement refused to go check out that school board meeting that caused someone so much alarm that she called Rivercom, yet later that week, they did respond to a call from a local gym in which a person refused to put on a mask or leave that place of business. There were about 40 or 50 people doing the very same thing on public property, and they didn't want to respond, which is why public servants and business owners and operators need to start using the T-word, trespass. Forget about masks, if someone is not following the rules in a business or on publicly owned property like a school district office, they can be asked to leave. If they don't comply, they're trespassing, and that's something that is a lot easier to get law enforcement to help you with. So stop calling and saying so-and-so won't wear a mask, and start using the word trespass, because if folks refuse to comply with the rules or leave, that's arguably what they're doing. But let's leave the uneven application of the law aside now and in this episode with a little comedy and context. A lot of people are wondering why groups of angry anti-maskers descended upon school boards across the country all in one week. That speaks to a high level of coordination and communication, but it shouldn't be that surprising to anyone who pays attention to the alt-right. They've been laying the groundwork for this stuff for months, using concepts like comprehensive sexual education and critical race theory to whip up their base into a frenzy of fear and anger. There's even a playbook that a conservative think tank, and I'm using that term generously here, put out to help folks like Matt Van Boger, Catherine Thomas, and Julie Norton win by using critical race theory as a wedge issue. How do I know this? Well, I got my hands on a copy and read through it, it was a laugh a minute, although I don't think it was meant to be funny. Here's the PDF titled "Combating Critical Race Theory in Your Community: An A-Z Guide on How to Stop Critical Race Theory and Reclaim Your School Board." Here's a quote that really sums up how they want candidates to weaponize manufactured outrage. Quote, "Use national momentum on the issue of CRT to win elections and reclaim your children's futures," end quote. When it comes to who activists should consider the enemy in this fight, they provide a handy list, quote, "The first step is to identify and define what exactly the problem is and who's perpetuating it. This could be any or all of the following: superintendent, some of the school board, or all of the school board, individual teachers and/or teacher unions, a vocal and active minority of parents," the irony, right? "local CRT activists, and of course, federal, state, county, parish, municipal, or non-governmental grants, or other financial support and resources," end quote. If you want to check out the document, I'm including a scan of the PDF in the show notes as well. This document and the behavior of right-wing activists at school board meetings across the country proves beyond a shadow of a doubt that this is a contrived controversy, an AstroTurf nothing burger that a vocal minority of activists in our community are using to bully public school board officials. The proof is right here and in the way they act during public meetings. The question is, what are the rest of us, the majority, going to do about it? Are you going to sit idly by as anti-science activists harass and bully our school board members and try to take over? Do we want the kind of people who will use fear and manufactured outrage to whip people into frenzies representing us as elected officials? Time will tell, and it's not up to me, it's up to you and this community. I've done my part to expose these people for what they are. Now, the fate of our school district, our schools, and our kids' educations are in your hands. Please remember to get registered if you're not, and vote this November. That's all for me for this week. Join me next week as we take a look at people who deserve screen time and respect, recovering addicts making a better life for themselves. I'm Dominic Boni, and that's next time on Common Sense.
Flooring is the foundation of decorating. It sets the tone for your home and reflects your lifestyle. At Apple Valley Floors to Go, their goal is to help you make that choice a great experience. You'll find extensive flooring options at their beautiful East Wenatchee showroom. Engineered hardwoods, laminates, vinyl planks, carpeting. Do it yourself or have their professional installation team do the work for you. Family-owned and operated in East Wenatchee.
Hi, folks, welcome to Save Mart. How can we help you today?
We're looking for a recliner.
Okay, right this way.
Great, I want that one. I would like that one.
That's a great choice.
And I want this one as well. And I definitely want this one.
For all the latest news in North Central Washington, go to ncwlife.com or find us on Facebook. Got a news tip? Email us at news@ncwlife.com or call 888-2020.